Welcome to Burlington's Candidate Debate. My name is Alan Folds and I'll be moderating the discussion. Joining me to ask questions is a press panel. Please welcome Nikki Cadillac of Burlington Buzz and Sidney Bowles, the B News news producer. At this session, we focus on the race for school committee. We have two candidates for one three-year term. The incumbent is Martha Simon and the challenger, Megan Nowitzek. Welcome, everybody. Let me go over the ground rules before we start. Here is how we will proceed. Each candidate will offer a one-minute opening statement, and we've drawn lots for the order. After that, our press panel will ask questions of the candidates, and each candidate has 90 seconds to respond. We'll alternate between members of the press panel and through the candidates for the first response. Next, each candidate is allowed to ask her opponent one question with a 90-second response. Finally, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement. We'll use the same order as we did for the opening statements. The closing statement is the opportunity for rebuttals to statements made by the other candidate if that person wishes to do so. In the interest of covering as many subjects as possible, we'll be keeping a close eye on the clock, so please frame your answers accordingly. If everyone is all set, we will get started. Our one-minute opening statements, we begin with Ms. Nowitzek.
Thank you to Nikki, Sidney, and our moderator, Alan Folds, and to the crew at BCAT for having me tonight. My name is Megan Nowitzek, and I'm seeking election to the Burlington School Committee. As a mom of two students at Francis Wyman Elementary School, I am deeply invested in the quality of education now and in the future. Over the past nine years, I have served the Burlington community in a variety of ways. I am president of the Burlington CPAC. I'm appointed to the Ways and Means Committee. I'm a member of Town Meeting. And over the past eight years, I have coached six baseball or softball teams with the Burlington Baseball and Softball Association. I am excited for the opportunity to serve the Burlington community as a member of the school committee. If elected, I look forward to improving educational outcomes by advocating for evidence-based program options in foundational areas of reading, math, and also listening to you, the Burlington community. My experience is well-rounded, and my time on the Ways and Means Committee will be an asset to the school committee. As we plan to move forward with our building projects, we need to make sure that we prioritize high-quality programming, facilities that meet the needs of our programming, inclusion for all students, especially students with disabilities, and the needs of all Burlington students, as well as the taxpayers. Thank you again for having me tonight and to the viewers at home tuning in.
Thank you. In our opening statement, Martha Simon.
Thank you to the moderator and the press, and thank you for BCAT for hosting us. I'm Martha Simon. I'm currently the chair of the school committee. I'm running for reelection because it is rewarding to give back to a town I love, a school district where my own children flourished, and a serious job which I have immersed myself in. My passion for education and past career as a teacher, in fact, I'm currently the only teacher on the board, gives me valuable perspective and depth in understanding the complex issues facing our schools. In education, there are often no easy answers. The work is hard and long-term. I'm committed to overseeing the hard work of improving student outcomes by using data, policy, and strategic planning to ensure that every child has the support they need to fulfill their fullest potential regardless of their abilities, their strengths, their challenges, and their background. Since I began on the school committee, I have made fiscal responsibility a priority, and I've also been an independent, thoughtful, and effective voice for students, families, and staff. Thank you.
And thank you. Now, we will begin with the questioning from our press panel. We'll begin with a question from Nikki Cadillac of Burlington Buzz.
Thank you for being here. My first question is this: Part of the school committee's responsibility is to evaluate the superintendent. Superintendent's been currently serving for quite a while. I'd love to know what you think are his strengths and then what are some opportunities for growth?
And we begin with Ms. Simon.
So, I have been a supporter of Dr. Conti. I think he's brought a lot of things to the district. We now have computer science for all. That goes all the way from pre-K to 12th grade. I mean, it started, it got rolled out with the iPads and the one-on-one curriculum initiative, sorry, and he's been very forward-thinking. And so, we now even have career innovation pathways. So, that, at the high school, that involves students, we have two innovation pathways, so that involves students who want to focus on a career in either computer science or in business. And that will be an opportunity for them to take specific courses and also have hands-on internship experiences. So, he's brought, he brought our tiered instruction to the Burlington schools where we try to address, we assess students in an ongoing way and try to make sure that each child is getting the specific skill training and instruction that they need. So, there's numerous ways that I support all the things he's done over the years. I do find that, I think communication is a weakness of his, and that's come up repeatedly over the years. I know he liked to just do his job, but we do need to communicate better, I think, with the town. Although I do think that with my pushing, we've become much more transparent. We've started post, we've been remembering to post things on the website. We've been remembering to communicate at our school committee meetings, our public meetings, what kinds of things the district is doing. But I do think there's more we could be communicating. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Nowitzek.
Thank you. I think some of Dr. Conti's strengths include his bringing the one-to-one iPad initiative to our district. I think he's very thoughtful when it comes to decision-making. He's not someone who makes a knee-jerk response. I think he takes his time and really thinks about what the community needs, the perspectives of all the stakeholders, and tries his very best to make the right decision. I've developed a good working relationship with him over the years while being on the Special Education Board, the PAC Board. I think that he responds quickly and thoughtfully to questions and issues that I raise to him. We've worked through improving policy together, and I think he is somebody who cares deeply about our students. An area of opportunity, I think, would be hiring. I think that we need to focus on finding and really actively recruiting individuals who are qualified, but also represent the various students, the various races and of our student body, and we need more representation for our students so that they feel welcome in our district.
Thank you. For our second question, we go to Sidney Bowles of B News.
All right. Thank you both for being here. I have two related questions, both on the capital projects that are currently on the school committee's plate. First of all, at the elementary school level, the select, or excuse me, the school committee voted not to combine Fox Hill and Pine Glen onto one site last year, which means it may be a long time before Pine Glen gets a significant upgrade. How do you consider balancing equity among the facilities, the buildings in those, in the elementary school level as a result of that decision?
In this time, we'll start with Megan.
So, the Pine Glen School is on the, is on the long-term capital plan to undergo a feasibility study. I think that it's important that we follow the same process for all of our buildings, that we go undertake a feasibility study to understand the areas that need improvement so that we can plan accordingly in a way that's fiscally responsible. I think that we need to take a look at the elements that are most impacting our educational programming and our students' success within the building and target those items as warrant articles. In the meantime, while we tackle the other projects that we have on our plate, we can't push all of our building projects together. It will be unbalanced for the taxpayer and create a significant burden, which I don't think is appropriate. And I know that we're in the process of installing air conditioning units at the Pine Glen Elementary School, so I think that that is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. And the same question, Martha.
So, many people know that we, we were looking to maintain our four school, four neighborhood school model. I support that model. I still support that model. But the state, in order to give us some funding, required us to consider other options, and they said we needed to consider combining the Fox Hill and the Pine Glen School. I was very wary of this, and yet, when we brought on professionals, they introduced us to some ideas that I hadn't thought of and that other people hadn't thought of. And I'm going to call it the Butterfly School. So, there's this, there was this option to rebuild both the Fox Hill School and the Pine Glen School and have them share a gym and a cafeteria where each school would have their own identity, each school would have their own principal, their own nurse. They would just share those spaces, which caused a lot of cost-effectiveness. And I also felt that, I went and visited other school districts to see where they had done that. I went to visit one, you couldn't even see the other school, so people were concerned it would feel too big to the students. I also visited schools where they did combine into a 600-student school, and the parents and the communities were very happy with that. But I was in favor of the Butterfly School where we would have two separate schools with their own identities and their own programming. I was, I could see that that would work. I felt like it was, it really, I voted for that because I thought it was important to do that for two reasons. One is that we could have provided new school buildings for twice as many students if we had replaced both the Fox Hill and the Pine Glen in that model, and it was going to be really much more effective fiscally. We were going to save the taxpayers a lot of money. At this stage of building the Fox Hill separately and building the Pine Glen separately, in the future, we're going to spend at least $50 million more. That's a lot of money. The state would have provided additional funding if we had gone with the larger school, with the Butterfly School. So, I, you know, we will continue to maintain the Pine Glen School, as Megan just said, and we will continue to maintain it like we maintained all of our buildings. I do worry about, we, our priority was the high school.
Can we wrap up?
The high school was our top priority, and we're now about a year behind. We started work on that project, but we are going to have to find out, figure out how to fund all these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. For our next question, we will stay with Sidney. She asked that question.
Fantastic. Martha, you intuited my next question, which is about the high school. That process is a little, a little newer in terms of the school, or the high school building committee, and there's a lot that we don't know in terms of how that committee is going to move forward. Given all the unknowns, given what we, what we still have to uncover in that process, it's not clear whether the suggestion might be a completely new building, major upgrades, a partial new construction, or some other option. Understanding that there are a lot of unknowns here, what are your considerations as you think about what that might look like for you?
Here, we'll start with Martha Simon.
Okay. I, I'm delighted that we're finally moving forward with the high school project. As I mentioned earlier, the high school was a top priority for a capital project for one of our school buildings. When I came on the school committee, the school committee had already applied to the state to help fund that project for a number of years, and I thought that, you know, we, we kept waiting. And after a couple more years, about five years ago, I said, "We really can't wait anymore." And it really was my pushing that we need to start looking into doing this project without state support, without state funding. We continued to apply for the money. Of course, we weren't going to not try, but we did finally get a feasibility study for the HVAC system at the high school, and we found out a lot of information. We knew it was going to be expensive just to redo the HVAC system. Some of the things that, that happen when you do a partial renovation repair like that is that other things get triggered. So, for example, the high school is not currently accessible, and we would have to update, and that's actually a good thing. We have one high school in town. It should be accessible to all of our residents, all of our students, so that it can be an inclusive place for all of our students. So, then, after we got that feasibility study, we did go back to the town, to Town Meeting, and they gave us the money to do a feasibility study, which we did just start. We just hired the designer. So, we are just at the stage of looking at, how can we do this? What would it look like? What is the best option? I can picture ways to do it where you might tear down a wing, build something new, put some students in it, tear down another, but that's just my idea. And just like with the Fox Hill School, the designers may come up with ideas that are even a better idea. Maybe we'll build a new science wing and tear down half of the high school, but keep the auditorium, those kinds of things. Maybe we'll build it over in the other fields. That's an option. I don't know what the best option is yet. That's why we hired a project manager, and that's why we hired a designer. And I am open to all of those options, depending on what we find out from their research and study.
Okay. Thank you. Same question, Megan Nowitzek.
Okay. Thank you. We're in the very early stages of this feasibility study, and there's a lot of studying that is still needed before we can come up with a plan. We need to be listening to the OPM across us and make sure that we are thinking about the costs of what this building will look like on the average household tax bill because we have a lot of projects coming, and I don't think the projects will, across town, you know, go away. We need to see what works for the town and taxpayers. We need to use the program of study to guide our choices and focus our efforts on understanding where the upgrades or renovations will be most effective to the students and the learning that takes place in the Burlington High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, and we return to Nikki.
Great. Thank you. The school committee has heard from some community members who say that social-emotional learning, including learning about race, gender identity, and sexual orientation, is the job of the parents and should be done at home. At the same time, the school committee has heard from children and staff members who have been bullied for these and other reasons, and the equity needs assessment that arose out of the second equity audit commissioned by the district suggested a need for greater cultural acceptance. What is it going to take to ensure that every student in our schools can go to school every day without fear of being bullied for a characteristic out of their control? And what will you do to support these efforts as a school committee member in the next three years?
And we'll begin with Ms. Nowitzek.
Thank you. Everyone deserves to feel welcome in Burlington. Everyone deserves to feel accepted and respected, and mutual respect is very important, personal, cultural, and religious boundaries as well. Burlington is a diverse community. We have 97 languages spoke in our town, at least. Color, children with special needs, they're all included in diversity, equity, and inclusion. We need to support recruiting qualified candidates, as I had mentioned before, and make sure that we have staff in our buildings that represent the student body, and I think that that will help feel, give feelings of inclusivity and welcomeness to our students. We, I think that we rushed into a director position that didn't work in the past. I think that we need to support the model that Dr. Conti has set forth with having coaches in each of our building. I think that's the best model moving forward. Each of our schools is unique, and we need to make sure that we are targeting the needs of each school at each level, and we need hands-on instruction. That's more, I think that's the most effective model, and I think that we'll have greater buy-in from everyone in the school if we have someone working directly with the students and staff. I don't, honestly, I don't think there's ever a perfect answer to questions like this. I think it's continued work, and I think it's the job of everyone to have these important conversations. I think that parents are experts on their children, and they understand when their children are ready to have these conversations, so I understand that struggle. However, I think that respect is a universal thing that we can teach in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, Ms. Cadillac.
Ms. Simon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I almost forgot you.
So, this is a topic that's very dear to my heart, and it's heartbreaking whenever I hear of incidents that happen. This is something that goes on across the country. We read about incidents in other states. We read about incidents across Massachusetts, and we hear about incidents in Burlington. It's, it's really hard to know, there isn't one simple answer. I do think that in the years I've been on the school committee, and even before that, working to develop some more cultural understanding in the town, for students to learn more about themselves and their peers is important. I think mutual respect, as my, as Megan just said, is very important. And I think that the social-emotional learning that we're, we've added in the last several years, much more consciously, is trying, it doesn't, it's not a separate thing where we just teach about emotions over here, but it's about really helping students understand sort of when they feel something, how does it impact other students? How can they control their own, regulate their own behavior so that other students are not hurt by what they might say in anger? That they can understand better and develop more empathy and kindness. We've had lots and lots of initiatives, as many parents and many teachers know, across the district, and yet, it didn't fix it right away. Another topic that Megan mentioned was recruiting staff that represents our district. It's very difficult. I've been trying for 10 years to figure out ways, and there are people who work on this issue, and there are many ways that we try to recruit, by reaching out in different areas when we post things, by wording our job descriptions differently, by trying to provide, it's not just about recruiting, but it's about retaining staff, and that's difficult, too, if there isn't a welcoming environment. So, we've provided supports for staff who come in new. And there's a lot of areas that don't, again, get publicized a lot. I know in the last two years, I asked for the numbers, we, our new hires were at about 20% of the, of the, not the standard white teacher kind of approach, lots of different diversity. About 20% of our new hires in the last two years have been people from other groups, other representations, other marginalized groups. And it, 20% of our new hires, doesn't change the percent very quickly, but we are getting there, and we have hired an instructional coach at the middle school to work on issues with this to help. We need to support our teachers to help them know how to interact with students who have come from different backgrounds. Okay. And we are hopefully going to hire, now we're going to hire an instructional coach at the high school to do the same thing. We have other people throughout the district working on these issues, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Nikki Cadillac, the next question.
Okay. Let's see. Students with disabilities are known to have about, 90% of students with disabilities are known to have about the same intellectual capacity as students in the general education population, but there's a discrepancy in MCAS scores that is much wider than, than that. And it's not really emphasized so much at the school committee meetings when we're going over MCAS results each year. What have you done or will you do to enable our students with disabilities to demonstrate their achievement at the same level as their general education peers?
And let's start with Martha.
All right. I'm not a big fan of MCAS. I was a teacher before MCAS came in, and I don't think it's a good tool for students who are, who are unable to write their name, to sit them in front of a test like that. And so, given all that, I do think it can show us some progress. It's supposed to measure a district. And when we've, when we look at our MCAS scores, there is a bigger gap for our students with special needs and for our students who are English learners. And so, that's something we continually look at. In terms of our special education students, we also provide a lot of programming in the district for students with more severe needs than many other districts. In fact, I'm really proud that in the time I've been on the school committee, we've either expanded or added new programs in the district that meet the needs of kids with more severe needs so that they have the option to stay in the district, that their parents have more options, and it also saves the district money to keep students in the district. But it also does have an impact on our MCAS scores, and I think those are areas that we need to continue to work. Each child in special education who receives services is on an individual education plan. We need to continue to provide the services that they need to do the best they can, and we also need to continue to include students because that helps them have access to the curriculum that all the other students are getting it. Getting, it's, there's obviously so much more we could say, but I think I'll stop there. It's, it's an important issue, and we need to keep working on it.
Thank you. And same question to Megan.
Thank you. So, one of my plans is to advocate for evidence-based curriculum options in reading, math, and writing. We need more training for our teachers. We have fantastic teachers who are dedicated to our students, especially the teachers who are working in our, in our general education classrooms with our special education students and in our programs as well. We are working now, and I have been advocating as part of the Special Education PAC, to have more teachers trained in Orton-Gillingham and Lyndon Mudd Bell evidence-based programs that target students with the most common learning disability, which is dyslexia. And often, students have dyslexia but don't qualify for an IEP, and having these supports in Tier Two and Tier Three will certainly strengthen MCAS scores. You know, when you, if you're having difficulty reading, you're having difficulty reading math, word problems in math. It permeates every part of your learning. So, I think that having more trainings for teachers and having just 10 this year who are trained, being trained in Orton-Gillingham, I think it's a great start. I have, those teachers that are being trained now are special education teachers. I want to see that training for general education teachers as well, and that's something I'll be advocating for K through three for teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we return to Ms. Bowles.
All right. Under the guidance of Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lisa Chen, Burlington Schools are working on a significant curriculum review with special attention paid to math. Where do you see as the areas of improvement for the curriculum? Or what should be the areas of focus for the district coming out of that review?
We'll begin with Megan Nowitzek.
Thank you. I have spoken to some teachers, and I understand that the teachers are not a huge fan of the math curriculum that we have now, at least at the elementary level, so I would like to review that and see what other options are available. I find it, and some of the problems to be sort of odd, certainly not the way that I learned math, but that doesn't mean that it's not valuable. I think that we need to make sure that our teachers find our curriculum and the products that we buy valuable for our students as well. I think that we need a true Tier One algebra program at the middle school that matches this rigor, scope, and sequence of the course that's offered at the high school level that will help students who are ready for an academic challenge progress to the next level once they are, do reach our Burlington High School and help them stay engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Martha Simon.
Yes. I'm delighted that Dr. Chen has begun the review of all of our curriculum with the math curriculum. I want to mention also that when we review the math curriculum, her beginning was to ask the teachers who are, she's working with teachers, she's not doing it by herself, and she's saying, "What are our beliefs?" And the teachers all said they felt that equity was really top priority. And so, again, this is where we're integrating, how do we culturally respond to many different types of students? How do we address inclusion of students with different abilities while we are teaching them all and giving them all access to the curriculum, and in this particular case, to the math curriculum? I agree that we are looking into the Algebra I in the eighth grade. I was a math tutor at another middle school where they did that. I'm open to that. I want to hear what their review comes up with, and I know they're going to do a good job with that. I think when it comes to curriculum, that a lot of it is what's being provided, and I think that we have a good basis. We have it with our Tier One instruction, which is the ability for every child to get the same curriculum, and we, we do tiered instruction, so students who need extra time on fractions have extra time on fractions, for example. And it all comes down to good, basic, high-quality instruction. And I, I'm very excited that Dr. Chen is also looking at, how do we do that instruction while providing teachers with the resources and the supports they need, whether it's to continue what they're doing or whether it's to add new material or new programs, that kind of thing. Do I have more time?
Actually, no.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Next question, Nikki Cadillac from Burlington Buzz.
Thank you. How would you reach parents and community members who are less vocal and less involved and just get their voices heard and get them involved in what's going on in the schools?
Okay. We'll start with Megan.
So, as a, as the chair of the CPAC, that was part of my role, was recruiting and engaging families who have a lot to say but often have a hard time finding their footing in advocacy. So, putting myself out there, you know, reaching out to different groups, different stakeholders, and asking, you know, how they think things are going, having honest conversations, you know, being willing to listen to people and hear what's going on in their lives, hear what their struggles are with their students, and... what their struggles are with their students, and, you know, finding areas where, you know, you see consistency and bringing those, those types of issues forward. Not everyone feels comfortable even when they have someone behind them. So I've had meetings monthly with our Director of Special Education, Christina Chiglini, which have been really, really wonderful, along with the rest of the CPAC. And we often talk about issues that families are not comfortable bringing forward. So I think also being willing to stand up and represent different issues is a skill that I have and I've proven to be effective in. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha, the same question.
Yeah, I think it's important to try to reach out and I definitely feel like I've gone out to different settings and reached out and I'm, people who know me know, I strike up conversations and I do ask. I say, you know, I ask what is, what are the issues that are important to you? What are your concerns? I'm always available for people to reach out and when people have concerns, I follow up on it. I make sure that after I've heard what the concern is, that I help them get to the person they need to speak to. And it's not usually the first person to speak to is the superintendent. And I think most parents know that. First, you talk with the person who we have the concern with, the teacher. And then if you're not satisfied, then you talk with the principal. And if it doesn't get resolved, then yes, we do need to reach the superintendent level and the school committee level, those kinds of things. But I try to help people and parents in particular find where to go next and how to talk about the issues that are important to them. I think another way is that we need to be sure that our, our building administrations are open so that they can hear what parents are saying and that our teachers are, have a time when they can talk with parents. And we do try to, I think that's built into the parent conferences to a certain extent. So I think it's a really important issue that we need to keep open and I'm certainly open. I've been open to that in the terms, I've been on the school committee and I will certainly continue to be open to anyone getting in touch with me if they have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. For our final question from the press, we turn to Sidney Bowles, B News.
All right. Burlington schools have been making efforts to increase sustainability lately. Just in the past couple months, schools have implemented composting in school kitchens and had conversations about reducing plastic waste in the cafeterias. Burlington has also been prioritizing sustainability in the designs of the new schools. What would you suggest as additional opportunities to reduce waste, reduce consumption, or increase sustainability in our schools?
And let's start with Martha Simon.
All right. Well, sustainability is an issue that I've been also working on for many, many years. And we almost got composting started about five years ago and then COVID hit after we got a little bit on the way. And I'm just delighted that we've been able to start the composting. I know it's a change in, for some people, like the cafeteria staff, but I feel confident that the, their administrators have been working with them to try to address any concerns that have come up. But in terms of, I feel like we've gotten healthy food. We, I voted for the new food service management company and we've had healthier food that's saving the school district money. And they're comfortable and familiar with doing things like composting. The high school students are actually doing the education so that the high school students have now started doing composting in the cafeterias as well. Sustainability, of course, is much bigger than that. Over the years, I have pushed for, we redid the lighting when that became financially reasonable. We have, when we, I've been studying sustainability issues for new buildings since two years before we started looking at the Fox Hill because I wanted to know enough to know what questions to ask. So we have experts who are working on this, who are the hired, the professionals that we've hired to work on the Fox Hill School. And they are looking at all the options to reduce carbon footprint and make it a healthy building. The research shows that healthy buildings with clean air and good ventilation improve student achievement and student intellectual ability. So there's, to me, no downside to it, improves student health. We, I make, you know, we use clean, green cleaning supplies and we do a lot of that. There's always more to be done. There's certainly more to be done, but I feel like it's been an important piece of what I've been pushing for. There are many other towns that have like a team.
Can you wrap it up?
I'm all out of time?
Finish your thought.
There are other towns that have a team that are pushing the schools to do more of these kinds of sustainability efforts. In this case, it's been a lot coming from me in this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finally, Megan Nowitzki.
Thank you. I first want to thank the cafeteria workers for taking on yet another thing. Composting is, you know, part of their day now. I'm not sure how much of a choice they got in doing it. I'm for composting, but I know how busy they are. They're feeding a lot of students, they're working with a new food service company, and they're busy. And so I wanted to say thank you to them for taking that on. I think that, you know, sustainability is important. I think we have made gains as a town. We're part of the green communities and I think that we should continue to work with the town to make sure that we are doing what we can in our schools as we make improvements. If we're replacing a roof, thinking, okay, well, are we, is this now a good time to install solar panels? We have solar panels at Memorial, we have them at this high school that we're in. And, you know, can we add them to Francis Wyman or, you know, Pine Glen? Or we're going to likely have them at Fox Hill if that project moves forward. So just continuing to look for opportunities where we are becoming more sustainable but not creating more work for, you know, the people in our buildings who are serving our children and keeping our children with the amount of time they need to eat their lunch and to clean up and get outside and play. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we move on to the next phase now. This is where each of you gets to ask a question of the other. We will begin, Ms. Simon, you can ask the first question.
So, infrastructures and taxes are on the top of the mind for many residents. And the Ways and Means has suggested bonding both the police station and the new Fox Hill School and then asking residents to vote for a debt exclusion after the fact, which would raise taxes for the duration of these projects. Any debt exclusion would do that. So where does this leave the Burlington High School project and the Pine Glen in the future? How would you address improvements needed for those buildings and how are we going to fund those other projects?
Ms. Nowitzki, your response.
Thank you. So, you know, the debt exclusion vote, we, what the Ways and Means Committee did was we voted to put forward a plan to not make the funding of the police station and the Fox Hill School contingent upon a debt exclusion. So what we are suggesting to the select board is to bring that project, those two projects forward for one vote in, in April, or I'm sorry, May of this year, and then voting for Fox Hill when it's ready to be voted through the following year. And then at the April election, have the debt exclusion vote added to the town election. So what we're trying to do is break up the two projects into two separate votes for funding and then let the taxpayers and residents decide whether or not they want to have that funded on top of the tax levy or within the budget itself. So there's, it's nice to have these choices. You know, we have a fantastic finance team, we have a very thorough and thoughtful Ways and Means Committee. And it's because of the hard work of these two committees that we have had, we have the choices of deciding whether or not we want to include these projects in the, in the typical budget or pay for them outside of the budget. As far as the high school, I think that really depends on what the costs look like. I think it's too early to say how we're going to fund it because we don't know how much it's going to cost. Thank you.
All right. And now we will do the reverse. Question from Megan.
So considering committees like Ways and Means have 14 voting members, why were you opposed to having all building committee members be voting members on the Fox Hill Building Committee and the Burlington High School Building Committee?
And Meg, Martha, your response?
Ah, so, the Burlington School Committee as a group felt it was important for, each of us felt it was important to be on those committees. The Fox Hill Building Committee was established based on a lot of the state funding source, the MSBA, their requests and requirements. And I'm actually not sure how the original voting members got started. I've asked multiple times and have not found an answer. So we have a lot of voting members and it felt very awkward. So when we started the high school building committee, it seemed to me logical to start with fewer voting members and see where it goes. In the end, both of those school building committees are advisory committees. Their advice and their choices are advisory to the school committee. And so, at this point, we've decided to leave everyone as voting members and I'm fine with that. I do want everyone who's on that committee to feel they, their voice is being heard. And I certainly felt like everyone's voice was being heard whether they were a quote "voting member" or not. So that's how I feel about it.
Okay, thank you. We've now reached the end of that portion. We move to closing statements. You each have two minutes for a closing statement. And we begin with Megan Nowitzki.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody out, out there and for their support throughout my campaign so far. I really appreciate all the love and help that I've been getting and I really want to just make that known that I'm very appreciative. I also want to highlight, you know, that I'm a parent of two students in the district and have cultivated a large and diverse network of parents with children whose ages and grades span K through 12. And I'm in touch with what it looks like to educate a child in today's world. Burlington is blessed with so many fantastic teachers and educators who care deeply about their students and feel strongly, and I feel strongly about supporting their efforts. I want to continue to make sure that we provide equity with our, in funding our extracurricular activities and create a positive experience for students. We have so many wonderful programs like our marching band, our robotics club, and so many talented athletes in district. And I want to make sure that everyone who would like to participate is able to participate. And I want to say thank you to everyone at home again, and thank you to everyone here for your time. And on April's, on or before April 6th, please cast your vote for me, Megan Nowitzki, for school committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Closing statement, Martha Simon.
Well, I have lived in Burlington for 32 years and my children went through the Burlington Public Schools. I first ran for school committee in order to give back to my town using my experience, wisdom, and caring. That is still my reason for running for reelection to the school committee. I've been a driver of change and an independent voice. It's been humbling to run my campaign and hear from all of my supporters how valuable they feel my time on the school committee has been. I'm going to get a little wonky here. The three responsibilities of a school committee member are policy, fiscal responsibility, and oversight of the superintendent. And I've done a good job with these three. When I first got elected, many of our policies had been over 30 years since they've been looked at. That would expose the district to legal risk. It is now, the policy manual is now updated and available on the website. I have established a policy subcommittee so that our policy manual will continually be reviewed and updated. I've done a good job in improving transparency in budget and accounting policies throughout the district in response to audit findings that occurred during my first term. With my encouragement, we hired our first business manager whose sole job it is to be responsible for budgeting and accounting. Communication is important, whether it's revamping the website, ensuring documents are posted, or encouraging more communication with parents. I continually remind the staff that this is crucial. We need to involve parents and guardians for the best achievement outcomes. Given that there are maybe 97 languages spoken in the homes in our district, we have introduced a variety of modes of translation and I wish I had time to talk about Parent Square. In my oversight capacity, I work closely with Dr. Conti and our new Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Chen, who has made extraordinary progress in the nine months on the job on improving student achievement, curriculum, and teacher development. I'm proud to say they use me as a resource to bring some of the best ideas to the district from my knowledge and background. My goal is to continue to advocate for every student in Burlington so that they can all reach their potential and become successful adults. For all of these reasons, I respectfully ask for your vote on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. We've reached the end of this forum. In closing, I thank both candidates, Martha Simon and Megan Nowitzki, for their, for sharing their vision with the people of Burlington and offering their time and service to the town. Thank you, Nikki Cadillac of Burlington Buzz and Sidney Bowles of B News. And finally, thank you to Jen Dodge and the rest of the staff and volunteers here at BCAT who made this forum happen. Election Day is Saturday, April 6th. The polls at the high school are open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Here's your chance to have a direct say in how the town of Burlington operates, how your community is run. Make sure you take advantage of that right and responsibility. Thank you for watching.